Good morning. It is 10:00 AM on Tuesday, April 4th. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Acheson County Commission Meeting. If you join me in a pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. Do you have any public comment? Doesn't hear anyone is on there for public comment. Additions to the agenda. We have several additions to the agenda. 10:15, we will have Road and Bridge talking through a Donovan County road agreement and a noxious weed item. We have maintenance coming in at 11:15. He will present after our 11:00 AM guest speaker. And then just a couple informational items that we'll add for discussion. Senior Village MDS Coordinator discussion, solid waste advertisement to bid. And that's all I have. And then we'll have four executive sessions later on. Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes from last week?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from March 28?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye passes three to zero. I will note, we did not approve minutes last week from March 21st. So those will be coming in the future as they are not completed. Commissioner comments and committee reports. Commissioner Noel?
I don't have anything this week.
Okay. Commissioner Reavis?
I don't have anything this week, but I'm anxious to hear about the KDOT workshop. Any more information about that from your workshop? At Austin, was it?
Oh.
Was there much? I didn't hear much about that. Was there much to share from that?
Not... I mean, there was... A lot of it was information on all the different projects. When they read the project across the state, it is really mind blowing. All statewide, all of the... Or well, just our district. Districtwide, how much is being done and how much KDOT has got going on. So I thought it was a good meeting.
Yeah, it was very good. I was trying to refresh my memory. I had like two pages full of notes that I took. Bruce Schlattney with KAC was there, just with an update and showing support to the counties, which was great. Keith Browning, the KAC local road engineer, talked about infrastructure sustainability, which I thought that was an interesting discussion of taking, for commissioners who's taken overall look with our Road and Bridge team of, you know, we have so many culverts. We have so many roads and bridges that have been here for hundreds of years. And just taking an overall look of what does it look like? Who's utilizing what? Do we still need to have them all on our list? Do we need to alter anything? And I think that'll go hand in hand with our current needs of, like we talked about last week when that gentleman inquired about how do we get our road paved when there's 12 houses on our road now that weren't there before? So just taking an overall look at our county and what the needs are and any adjustments. The Nelda Buckley with Kansas LTAP, she spoke and gave some resources for townships. So I sent those on to my townships so that they have that resource as well. And then Todd Salfrank spoke on basically local project updates. Then we had a break. And then after lunch, or I guess right before lunch, was just what Eric said, just an overview of all the projects in every county that are happening. So it was nice to see Acheson's projects listed and, you know, several things.
Yeah, I wanted to do that, but I couldn't pull it off, so.
And it was also nice because they had like the engineers and consultants that we work with were there. So you could put a face with a name. Harbor Construction, the folks that we just awarded for Morton Road, they have representatives there. So needing, you know, being able to meet them was nice.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah. So I have a Senior Village Advisory Board meeting tomorrow. And I received an anonymous feedback form asking if we can fix the bridge lights. Let's not wait until Amelia, please, can we resolve whatever this issue is? So I just wanted to update everyone on that, that our City of Acheson Fire Chief has actually written a grant and he was going to submit that on March 14th. I gave him a letter of support on February 23rd in support of getting the grant for that money to go toward fixing the lights because they've identified the issue and it's a huge price tag. So I was really happy that he was taking the initiative to write the grant and ask for a letter of support.
Yeah, I've talked into the building.
Yep, so we did that. I was contacted about illegal burning in my district for the second time for the same individual. So I contacted them and then reiterated to call the dispatch number when that's happening so that there's records of it. And I guess the other thing, the final thing is just an apology. I've been reached out to by several Acheson County business owners on the sales tax, the countywide sales tax reduction from 1% to three quarters. That took effect on Saturday. When we had put the resolution in place back in November, I had asked the question if we should notify our businesses. And the answer I received was no, that Kansas Department of Revenue would notify the businesses. Friday, the day before it took effect, I was asked by other businesses. And we found out that KDOR does not provide individualized notices to businesses. So just want to apologize. I know business owners are frustrated because they're doing what they do best and running small businesses in Acheson County. And we, my opinion is we should have over communicated so that they know that. So I just wanted to apologize. I feel like I'm apologizing more and more lately for misinformation that we have, that I'm given, but just want you to know that I'm here to support you in any way possible. So that is all I have for today. 10:00 AM, Kim Pruitt, and she's on here. I have purchase order. And our Joint Communications Director suggests a purchase order in the amount of $3,240.40 to Motorola Solutions for Shannon Fire Department Purchase Radio APX 4500 Enhanced Plus Programming of Radio through Midwest Mobile. Do I have a motion to approve?
I would approve that.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. I wasn't sure what's that you might have been dispatching, so I just took care of it for you. I appreciate all the information you sent us ahead of time.
Thank you.
Okay. 10:15, we're ahead of time, but I'm adding Road and Bridge.
Okay. Scott Marsh, the State Lead Director, sent us a letter pointing us to add Bull Thistle to noxious weed in Acheson County. And Ben and I have talked, and we would like to also add Teasel. And Teasel is starting, if you go from Lomont to the county line, you'll see it everywhere. There's some bridge south of Acheson. 116 has it from Ellsworth to Harrington. And what we need is for you guys to approve this in the minutes. And then it will be sent to my Lead Secretary of Agri-Culture in Hillside. It would just be adding these two, Bull Thistle and Teasel, to the noxious weed list in Acheson County.
I'll make a motion to designate Bull Thistle and Teisel as noxious weeds in Acheson County.
I'll second that with questions. So that's a different variation of thistle than I think I have.
Yes, there's several different thistles. So the Bull Thistles, one that Scott Marsh asked us to add, and then the Teisel is something that we see as a problem. And then that gives us, being it's a noxious weed, we can go spray it. Whereas before, it really needs to be a noxious weed for us to take care of. We'll just go.
Okay.
And then we don't need to sign anything, just if you guys okay it, then it's in the minutes. We'll get the minutes next week and then we can send all that to Scott Marsh.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to add Bull Thistle and Teisel to the County Option Noxious Weed Declaration request in Acheson County. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero.
Okay, I've got a couple more things. Starting Monday, April 10th, next Monday, we're going to 10 hours a day for summer work. And our office hours are going to be Monday through Thursday, 7:00 AM to 4:30. And then Friday, 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And we will have our sign made and put up for that.
And you'll update those on social media and website?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you anticipate that to go until Labor Day, roughly?
Until October. It depends upon how the weather is and how it's going. Usually about the first of October. Donovan County road agreement was just sent to me this morning. We worked hard a long time to get this up there and they finally signed their part of it. And if we can get that signed, then we have a road agreement, a new official road agreement with Donovan County. And then I think I talked to Pat earlier, I think we'll go Jackson next because we have a little deal there, you know? So if we take care of a county road, put the tubes on the Jackson County side, whose responsibility is it? And that's why we need to get these road agreements taken care of.
Okay, I would look for a motion for the chairman to sign the road agreement between Boards of County Commissioners of Acheson and Donovan County, Kansas, providing for the allocation of responsibilities for the construction, repair, and maintenance of roads, bridges, culverts, and supporting infrastructure located on or near the county lines between said counties, presented by our Road and Bridge Director and County Counselor. Do I have a motion to allow me to sign?
So move.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye passes three to zero. And you have my signature.
And also, next week, we're sending four people to head our training for chip and seal. So we've been sending a lot of people to training, a lot of employees to training, and we've been holding a lot of training classes here at Memorial Hall. So just wanted to let you know. And that's...
Where do they go for that training?
It's in, up by Chicago. I can't remember. It's Anner Manufacturing. So it's, they'll leave Monday, come home Friday, but it's three days. And I went last year, three of us went last year, and they're the people who make the oil trucks. They're the people who make the chip machines. And if you had in class, then they'll take you out and you can look at the equipment to go through the plan. But it's very worthwhile. And I want to try to send so many people every year so that they can go through the training.
You said by Chicago?
Yeah.
So since it's out of state, do we need to make a motion to approve that training like we do EMS?
I don't know that it's necessary for you to do that. I don't know that it was really technically necessary for you to do it with EMS.
Okay.
You certainly could.
I'm just trying to be consistent and make sure we know.
Corey, we acknowledge you doesn't have to do it each day because he does it every year.
Yep. I just think it's important for us to stay consistent with departments.
It's whatever it is. I'm fine.
Yep.
I'm fine with it. The ones that went last year, are they all still with you?
Two.
Okay.
Me and one other. The Ross one. But then Anner came out when we started the chip seal progress, process last year. Their guys came out and helped us get started.
Oh, good.
So they're really, really good about, hands on coming out. They brought the main guy, came, him, the main two, and they came out and helped us get the oil set where we need it and showed us how to run our equipment. And everybody who's seen it's thought we've done a pretty job. So it's very worthwhile as far as I'm concerned. I'm glad I went last year.
They spent some time on the maintenance and storage of the equipment, too?
Yeah, but the main thing is how to set it up, how to calibrate it.
Right.
How to get it to work and what different things to look for while you're doing it. And so how close to state of the oil truck and let the pit break and just pretty good. But I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so our next timeline is 11:00. So I have a couple of things I'd like to put in here. And I would like to have a motion to allow the Solid Waste Director to give authority to advertise to bid. She had sent us the verbiage that sealed bids for the Acheson Solid Waste Transfer Building Facility Edition and New Scale House will be received at the Acheson County, Kansas Courthouse, 423 North 5th Street, Acheson, Kansas 66002. Until 10:00 AM Tuesday, May 2nd, proposals will be open and publicly read at that time. Contractors may obtain copies of the drawings and project manual from the Office of Creel, Clark, and Seifert on Friday, April 7th, 2023. And each contractor will be responsible for the return of received construction documents in good condition within five days following notification of award of contract. Each unreturned set will be invoiced to the contractor at $100 per set. Drawings and project manual can also be obtained at the website that will be published, ccsae.com, with the valid username and password at no charge. Then there's a number to call with any information. The project will be tax exempt and has liquidated damages and requires performance and labor and payment bond. There will be a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting on Tuesday, April 11th, at 9:00 AM at the Scale House, 8575 Mioto Road, Acheson, Kansas 66002. Do I have a motion for Stacy to publish this?
Yeah, I would move to publish this document.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye passes three to zero. Okay. All right. Next, David Mercier had sent me an agreement signed by Jennifer Holt House, the MDS consultant, and is requesting that I, as the chairman, sign this agreement with Mrs. Holt House. Pat, have you had a chance to review that? I know we just got it this morning.
I prepared it.
Oh, you prepared it for him? Okay, perfect. So do you have a copy of it by chance? I can print one if not.
Yes, I did not print it.
That's okay.
Wait. No, I did not print it. I can print one.
I'll hit print real quick and then that way we can get it.
Well, if I print it, it might be a little better.
Okay.
A little better quality.
Than the scanned copy I got? Perfect. Yeah. Do I have a motion for, to allow the chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding with the MDS Coordinator Consultant at Senior Village?
I really don't have any information. What does it pertain to? What is the agreement?
Let me just print. Actually, you know what? For informational, I'm going to forward it. You guys can look at it. HR was involved in helping David Mercier, our admin, hire an MDS Coordinator Consultant. So an RN has to sign off on all MDSs. So that's what this contract is. Let me forward that so that you guys all have a copy. He just sent it to Pat and I this morning, the final signed copy. But there might have been a copy prior to that.
Yeah, there was something before that.
So yeah, I'll let you guys review it and then I'll ask for a motion again.
Yeah, March 23rd. That was the... Yeah, we had one.
Thank you.
With Holt House. Is this the same person?
Oh, this is a way better copy than the one that's speckled and scanned in.
Right, right.
Oh, gosh, yeah. So what's the difference between this memorandum and the one back in March?
The one back in March was, oh wait, this is probably the same one.
Oh, same thing? Okay.
Unless you're looking at the one for the administrator.
No, no, no. I had the same name up there, yeah, Holt House.
No, it's the same.
Oh, okay.
Time if you guys want to review it.
I would move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to allow the chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding for the MDS Coordinator Consultant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Let me just stick it in the blue folder here, Pat.
That's fine.
Get this one, too.
We still have about 35 minutes. I don't know.
Brian just got here.
Perfect. We would love to have him early if he's available. And then he'll run in. We'll just do it backwards. Thank you.
Is this was ready?
Yeah.
You got a job at the post office now?
What?
Looking for the post office now? With mail?
You want Jack's mail?
Well, that usually goes, that should go there.
Okay, so Jack Jerry Madden?
Yeah. If it was the, that's the way I always do it, is it's like...
Based on the district?
Yeah, it was on the district.
Good call.
Way I always assumed that everybody would get equal distribution.
Hi. Thanks for coming early. We're running ahead of schedule, so...
Good thing, huh? Certainly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So what I've got is I've got, I'm going to have a purchase order turned in by Connie today, but I thought I would go over some of that on there. And I'll make the total $24,085.40. But I've got like rock ridge for the angle iron and the steel plate, which would be for the window. I've got some electrical labor of $2,000, electrical material, which includes the wiring and the boxes and all the rings and everything for that for $25.60. And then KC Coring, of course, to cut the hole would be $7,580. Supplies for drywall is a total of $1332, and that includes building the, you know, having the room sheet rock that depart. There's plaster and sheet rock. In other words, a little area that they want to close off and make the office will be drywall and the other will be plaster. So it's not confusing. On the next item I'm giving you is Brooks plastering for $7,600. That will be the outside walls and the front part where we cut into, they'll replaster everything in that room. And then I've got the sink, the cabinets, and all that just bundled into one from, of And that includes the sink, the cabinets, countertop, faucet, and drywall mud and 2x4 for frame. So, and I will have all that for her, but I'll just let her take the total and put the purchase order in on the total.
Right.
I do believe that they'll probably be, it may come in a little less here, maybe, but eventually it'll, she'll probably have to come back for a little more because we don't have flooring in there yet. And I know she doesn't, I don't think she has the desk, everything for the desk yet. So I know she'll have to come back for more, but that'll let me get started and roll through without coming each time back to Connie and saying, hey, we're ready for this phase, we're ready for that, we're ready for this. And we can just go on.
Does it have the windows in it? The windows aren't there, right?
The windows are not in this. I will, I will put that in today. I will have the windows back to you today because I have that pricing and I don't have it with me, but I do have that pricing. I just missed it, so I will get that back, too, on there. And we'll go from there.
So she's actually going to send the PO then?
Yeah, I'll have her do the PO since it's her department. I'll have her put that in. And if she gets time to bring it today, then this afternoon, I'll have her do that this afternoon. Is that right? Just have her put that PO in this afternoon, or do you want that?
Yeah, do you need it before next Tuesday?
No.
Okay, let's just put it next Tuesday. You can have it, yeah, if that works for you.
And that will go against the...
154.
Arba, yeah, right.
Okay.
Harper or 154?
Capital money, yeah.
Yeah, we had 104 left in that one for...
I just want you to know where we were at. We'll start cutting the 15th, and we're in the process of moving right now and moving them downstairs and getting all that done. So as soon as I get a clean, clear office, then I can go ahead and start tearing out and getting ready for trying to figure out. Yeah, it's going to be a big thing, you know? What do we, what do we find when we remove some of this stuff, you know, as far as electrical and where they came in and put in these, what they want to call them, the little pods, you know? Where did they grab their electrical from? Where, you know?
Have they been having any like problems with electrical...
Since I started. Since I started. So what have I been here, two and a half years now? So yeah, every, every, yeah, all the time. So that's an ongoing thing in a couple places up there, but it's just, we're running a lot more power now than even when they did their first little upgrade, you know? Things have changed to where there's a lot of different items that we plug in that were never meant to be in the first phase of electrical for that courthouse. You know, it was meant for one lamp and the typewriters didn't need to be plugged in or anything like that. So now we're kind of forcing a lot more, you know?
More electricity than 1875 or whatever it was.
Yeah, a little bit. Just a, just a skosh, just a skosh. But other than that, you know, those issues are being resolved when we're doing it. So that kind of justifies a lot of doing it right there is just to get those issues fixed. And then looks, of course, they'll change the looks of it.
You suspect you're going to have to bring another feed in of some kind of electrical to really get enough out there?
There'll be three home runs brought into that room now.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say.
And right now it's on, at least we know one's in there. And so one's running most everything. And then the lighting, we haven't figured out where it's coming from yet, so.
When do you think you have it all torn out so I can come look at it?
Well, if we, if we're starting there on Monday of next week... Uh, well, if we, if we're starting there on Monday of next week, then, uh, we'll have it probably pretty well gutted by Tuesday or Wednesday.
Yeah, okay. Maybe after our meeting next season, we can do a tour, a demo.
There you go.
Yeah, because that's the interesting part and that's the part that the public won't get to see is, oh my goodness, look at that. That shouldn't have been there all this time.
If we could do that next Tuesday and actually maybe get some photos and post them, I think it'd be good.
Yeah, I think.
I would support that.
Yeah, because I mean, that, that lets them know, you know, and lets them know that we're not just doing it because we, you know.
Sure, sure. Some of the pictures that you have shown me.
And as a taxpayer, I wanna know that too, you know? So it, it makes a big difference when somebody's spending your money and, uh, it's like, why? Well, this is why.
I appreciate the way you bundled this project together to give us an overview. That, that's helpful. That way we can approve it once, but have all the documentation behind of knowing what, what's encompassed. So thank you for that.
And I did forget the windows, but I'll throw them in there and have that with that next Tuesday.
We'll get more time this week. You may have something else come in, make them out of work.
Yeah. But that's all I have for today, other than, you know, wanting you to know where I'm at. I'm still upstairs. I'm getting very close to, uh, finishing that and, uh, then, oh, I do want something. So on that brick, I also, this would be on me, but I'd like to ask for permission to go ahead and do, you know how we did the wall there, right, downstairs? I'd like to do the stairway coming down. And I've got different pricing for the entrance, the main entrance off of Fifth Street, which is in bad shape. The ceiling and the, uh, the walls are in bad shape and I'd like to just redo them and have them come in and.
You can come up with the outside courthouse, that entrance there coming in.
The en, the first entrance, then.
Right.
Vestibule there at the front on the north side.
Oh, the north side, okay.
And so to do the ceiling and the walls, uh, it's sixteen eighty.
What do they do to it?
They'll, they'll come in, they'll take all the bad off and, uh, replaster everything and put mesh on there that kind of ties it all together. So that, uh, it'll.
Okay, this is actually in the courthouse.
Uh, this is inside that first vestibule.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's, uh, pretty rough there where they.
I looked up, okay, let's look up.
Uh, then, uh, the stairwell coming down the stairs, not that we don't need to do, uh, a lot more. And I'd like to just keep going, but the, the whole stairway coming down from the third floor, because I'll have that all completed up there. So I'd like to take it as I'm getting that areas done, then taking care of the entrances. But that stairway and the ceiling, because of how high it is up there to reach, it's five thousand seven hundred and sixty to do the, all the walls and the ceiling. But if you, and I should, I should have pictures of that because, you know, you see the big chunks of plaster falling off and everything like that. And I just think it makes it look a lot, you know?
Yeah, that's a good thing to contract because they'll kind of close their office for a day or so, won't it, just about?
Uh, we're gonna try to dance around that and we're gonna try to keep them open, so.
Wow, yeah, good luck with that, man.
We will, uh, once, once they get up there, they're aware that that office is there. So we'll pick a day that court is very low or something and, uh, we'll get them in. And if they need backed out, then, uh, the process of moving what we need to move, you know? They'll work with us, I think, on that. So they'll understand that, hey, we need as much time as we can before you need to come out there. But, uh, we can get them out in an emergency if we need it to. Yeah, I think it'll be, that, that, it's not very noisy. It's, you know, the process of, the first process is kind of noisy, but other than that, you know, it's not very noisy. So I'd like to go ahead and do that, but I would, I, I don't know where we, you know? I think the vestibule there in the front, I think I could take out of my budget now, but, uh, the other one, the stairway, I think we'd have to come up with a plan to be able to get that, but.
Well, if it only accesses the county attorney's office, though.
What's that?
If it only accesses the county attorney's.
Yeah, from the courts up.
Yeah.
And then as we get down, uh, as we're getting done downstairs, then we could come down the steps and, uh, take the rest of that. That ceiling in the, on the east side, when you come in off of Fifth Street, that, that's really bad too, so it needs it too. But because of what we're doing there, I don't want to do that prior to getting anything else done. And then once we get to pass the treasurer's office, we'd, I'd like to do the rest of that too on the outside and clean all that up. And then, okay, just keep moving down the hall.
On the table.
Okay. That's where I'm at.
Um, I know you're finished and we only have like twenty-five more minutes. Do you mind sticking around for the eleven o'clock presentation? Okay, perfect.
Yeah, because I, I wanna hear what they got to say.
Yep.
So you're gonna bring that back for us to build around next week on the other areas?
Yeah, yeah.
Or do we need to decide what fund it would come out of?
Yeah, I think we should talk about it in our budget workshop to make sure we know where.
Where it's coming.
Yeah.
So.
Were you wanting to do that work while they were in town doing the other work or just need to plan it?
We just, what I'd like to do is plan it before, uh, June, because this guy's gonna retire. And so those prices won't be around after that.
Oh, okay. Will be good.
Um, okay, so there's two more things I wanted to bring up that are on the agenda, but did you guys get the email from Katrina Mentor, uh, manager of community programs, the Family Conservancy, um, Communities Action, Communities in Action Workshop, um, at Trinity Lutheran Church on April eighteenth from nine to three. She had said, please join us as we have a community conversation about childcare in Atchison and Leavenworth Counties. They're gonna look at data, um, hear from experts in the field and look at grant opportunities and goal setting. It's an action-oriented workshop designed to address infrastructure and workforce development needs, including economic impact of childcare. Didn't know if you guys got that.
I got, I didn't yet.
Are either one of you?
I'm not planning on going.
Okay, never mind, that's a Tuesday, so we can't go. We will be.
I thought we had a conference somewhere.
Yeah, we're in a meeting here, so it's not gonna.
Uh, what was the timeline then?
Nine to three.
Nine to three.
Um, but I just wanna acknowledge, make sure, I mean, I know that childcare is an issue in Atchison County because.
I wonder if we can make sure somebody's there.
From our organization?
Yeah.
Have anyone in mind you'd like to send?
Childcare doesn't fall under any of our specific departments.
And we don't really have economic development as far as.
Do you mind reaching out to us later? That is during our commission meeting?
Yep.
But what I did, I think there's pretty good representation it's gonna be that really know the needs as well as we do or probably better, so I think, I think this committee's well represented.
Okay, how about I send her an email on behalf of the commission that it's during our meeting, but please send us at commissioners@atcoks.org, a recap of the meeting. Is that fine with you?
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
Okay, so I will do that.
Glad you brought that up, I forgot about that one.
Um, David Mercier, our administrator at Senior Village, had emailed me, uh, wanting to spend, uh, capital, his capital budget on two bariatric beds and mattresses. Um, I was hoping that we can, um, just visit with him during our budget workshop. I, I don't really feel, I'm not ready today to take action and I'd like to have you two involved in that discussion. He sent it to me and we meet Thursday at one PM, so we can hear from him what his needs are as a group, if you guys are fine with that.
What was the cost on that?
Um, so.
Cheap.
Yeah.
Was there an urgency to have eaten these right away or?
I'll just read you what he said. So I have attached information on purchasing two bariatric beds and mattresses, as well as one bariatric lift, a scale and one shower chair. Although we can purchase the shower chair at our monthly nursing supply budget, I would like to request that the purchase of the other items come out of the capital expenditure budget line item. According to our financials, at the end of February, we have thirty-eight thousand nine forty-seven eighty left in the capital expense budget. With receiving regular referrals from bariatric residents, we could accommodate more admissions with the right equipment. Also, we are renting one bed now and will reduce the cost to help offset the eight thousand eighty-nine ninety-five cost. Please let me know if you can bring this to the commission for review. Thanks, Dave. So again, I would like, um, I can forward you the info and then we can talk to him on Thursday at our budget workshop if you guys are.
And make the decision Tuesday.
And, yeah, and then we would have a purchase order he could give us by Tuesday if.
Yeah, that's fine.
If we feel like this is something.
Yeah, I'm sure it's fine, but yes.
Yeah, I think it'd be much, much more thorough.
Okay. Recommendation on Tuesday, April eleventh? Okay. You guys have anything else? We've got about fifteen minutes before the next gentleman gets here.
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
So, um, all right, uh, on, Benedictin College has approached us or wants to approach us and we'll be here next week to discuss with you the possibility of issuing another set of bonds. Uh, this is a smaller bond project. This is a, uh, three-point-five million dollar project for the construction of three new row, row houses, also for student housing. And most of the projects that we've been involved with have involved student housing. This, uh, Scott Christ with UMB Bank, who has been involved in, I think, all of the projects before now, is the one that contacted me about, county's willingness to continue to issue bonds for the. So they'll be here next week.
Are those on Second Street?
They, he didn't say exactly where they were, but I think there will be people here from DC that could tell us that.
Their plan is to put them right there, I think, on, between the new ones and the old ones right there, the old ones properties.
Trying to think, is there, are there vacant lots there?
Those houses.
There, there are houses there now, but there will be.
I'm assuming that's where they're, I know long-term, I saw it before planning commission, but it could be different.
It seemed like the frequencies have just been picking up with the, the issuance of bonds. I mean, is that, uh, any concerns with getting, is there a, a limit or?
Well, we have a, a limit of ten million dollars per year in tax-exempt bonds that we can authorize or issue. So we would still have six and a half million dollars after this issuance. Well, no, we used our red bonds last year. Were they this year or were they last year?
They were last year.
Last year.
So we, we would still have plenty of room, I think. I'm not aware of any projects the county is considering. It would be more than, more than that. Trying to look up, I, so we did twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and two series last year. So I guess we also did twenty thirteen and twenty seventeen, so.
I mean, it's been very frequent.
Some of those were refinanced, weren't they?
Uh, several of them were, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, they just refinanced them because the rates were lower. The same thing happened at City, we had something renewed.
I think it's a great problem.
No, this, this is good. This is good stuff.
It's like seeing new.
It's their money, not our money.
Yeah, I just, I, not knowing the, the bond world and that, you know? Just wanna make sure that we're not overextending somehow, somewhat.
Not at all, yeah.
These are, are not responsibilities of the county. Uh, there's not a scenario where the county would be called upon to pay for these bonds.
And that ten million threshold is an annual, so once you hit that end of the year, we have a clean slate again, so that's.
Yes.
Awesome.
Yes. And Bond Counselors also explained their interpretation of the IRS rule. It said, we don't have a plan to issue more than that, so if an emergency project comes up in November and it does push you over, that those could still be issued as non-taxable bonds. But it hasn't ever come up with us in July. We could ask Bond Counsel if there were more questions about it. Okay, um.
Can I ask one more question? Did Mr. Chris send any information that we should have ahead of next week so that?
We could review.
Yeah, I didn't know.
I, I could forward the email. There isn't, uh, no, there isn't much with it, but I, I will forward the email to the commission. Why don't I write back to him and ask him for the documentation to fill in?
Thank you.
I'll do that and I'll talk to you on the, the email. And I, uh, also related to bonds, but unrelated to the Benedictin, we had, twenty twenty-one adopted a resolution on behalf of central school apartments for industrial revenue bonds. They have a plan to issue or request to issue, uh, non-taxable industrial revenue bonds, which is part of that same project, I think, the construction part and the financing part. And again, these would, uh, these would not eat up any portion of the ten million dollar limit because they're not, because these are taxable bonds. But, uh, I think that was, at least in twenty twenty-one, anticipated that this would be the, the final step in, in that project. They similarly will be, uh, be here next week and they definitely have a proposed resolution. So I will make sure they could fund the agenda and copy some of that to everybody.
And you said those are taxable?
Yes. So that, that's on the bonds. We also had started a discussion about our grant policy. I, other than switching out Pratt County and Atchison County on those forms, I, I don't know if there's a desire to have a more robust written policy.
That, that seemed like a pretty good system and easy to track.
With both documents, yeah. I think it covered pretty much what we.
And Michelle seemed comfortable with it as well for tracking.
All right. Then the Amberwell.
Can we go back to that? Do you wanna put that in the for us to approve or, uh, next week we could actually do that or?
My, my understanding, we are approving that today and then having Amberwell next week. Was that what you guys understood?
A minute, Mr. Grant Policy.
You're right.
Okay.
Weren't we gonna approve the policy prior to having Amberwell?
That's what I thought, yeah, yeah.
Well, okay, I, I, Michelle and I converted the document to Word and switched out, uh, the county name and that's it, so. The county name and that's it, so. Do you want copies of the email or?
Yeah, look at it quick, yeah, just, yeah, just make sure. Send it right? And we discussed, even if it's a. Department, Road and Bridge Department grant, they'll still get a copy of this for Michelle.
Yeah, I thought we discussed going over an all encompassing list as well as what we have right now.
Try to get a database going, yeah.
So when do we want that list? Cause I thought we were looking at it today, but.
We might want to task Michelle with that as far as just to try to. Contact department heads for that. What do you think? Should we send that to them from us?
What?
Do you want Michelle to give us a list of all grants that?
Yes.
Okay, when do you want that list?
Whoever she can provide it, I mean.
That could be in six or eight weeks. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's a hurry. I mean, just a few weeks. It'll take time for it to get hold of all the department heads and budgets. They work on budgets now, so.
Is that good with you, Ken? Six weeks?
Just, yeah.
Thank you.
Give plenty of time. So nothing's gonna change, we just better get a database together.
So like the sixteenth would be the six weeks? Is that what? I'm just making sure that's what you guys are thinking.
Fine with me. Good with you guys? Do I need, yep. Do I have a motion to adopt the Atchison County Grant Receipt Policy and Form? And Atchison County Grant Application Form as presented from County Counselor Patrick Henderson? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Thanks, Pat. Alright.
Said all you have.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions, but we can come back to that when we get to the county councilor thing. Uh, Mr. Clancy?
Yes.
Alright, hi.
Hi.
I'm Casey Quinn.
Hi, Casey.
Eric Noel.
Hey, Eric.
Alan Reavis.
I'm sorry?
Alan Reavis.
Alan, great. Information. I don't know if you remember, but, uh, we did an inspection of the courthouse and the soldiers' sale was war memorial. Couple of years ago. And, uh.
Yeah, this is Brian Oswald, our maintenance director.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I took you on the walkthrough.
That's right. So it's been a couple of years and I thought I'd better follow up with y'all just. We're expanding pretty quickly and we're in quite a few more courthouses now than we were when I initially came and met with you guys. Um, so usually the buildings are worse. When we come back, you know, even in two or three years' time, you come back. Rising damp is the problem that we, we handle and it's that moisture that comes up underneath the building and bring salt with it. That salt gets inside the masonry, re-crystallizes, expands at a rate of six tons per cubic inch. So it literally crushes the foundation and, uh. We have the only system in the U S that actually stops it. So it's a permanent solution. We can't reverse damage. It's already been done to the building. But we can halt it from getting any worse, which saves untold amount of money down the road, down the line. So, um, because it's been a while, I wanted to extend, you know, another inspection just to. If, if you guys would like me to, to go and look at the buildings and, uh, take some new hydrometer readings, new fresh photos just to see. What's going on in both the courthouse and the war memorial and see if there was anything you guys wanted to do with it.
So I'm looking at our maintenance director kind of, um, and not to put you on the spot by any means, and we can talk about this next week if you'd like, um. But I know that we just, um, worked with one of the trustees from Memorial Hall who did, um, in engineering study and different things in depth. Uh, oh, look at, at Memorial Hall, um, and then Brian's been doing in-depth work, work on our courthouse, so. Um, it might be something where we need to kind of have a conversation.
The inspections are free cost too.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I would say the inspection's fine. I see what you're talking about and I seen it last time more at Memorial Hall. But since we've done the courthouse, there's been, I was just coming off when you did that inspection.
Right.
But we have, uh, attached gutters that weren't attached. We have clean drains that weren't working before and letting water come in the windows here. I don't see it. To be any worse, a lot better probably at the courthouse.
Oh, I'm sure it is.
I still see it at the hall because that isn't so much groundwater, that is, uh, building water coming through the bricks, so. You're gonna find that pop on the plaster and if that cures that, then maybe they want to do something like that.
Well, we, we guarantee you some moisture that's coming up underneath your buildings. Um, but we, this is our eighth year doing it now in the U S. We got the exclusive rights of the whole country. And in the eight years, we're finding that it actually removes any excess moisture from all organic materials within the building. Um, some, some of them, some of the valuable document vaults, uh, we've been in some of the courthouses, the moisture levels were so bad that the. The old valuable docks were stuck together. They couldn't even open them to look at, look at them and now we're hearing that they can open them and see them again. We're not guaranteeing that we can do that, but we're finding that we remove all excess moisture from the building and that's. That's priceless thing to do, you know, so one thing is, you know, like we were talking about Brian with the tuck pointing. We'll get all that moisture out of those bricks and out of that, that's trapped in those walls. The thing is, we can't stop mother nature. So if you guys have a driving rain or something like that and that moisture gets in behind any of that tuck point and it's failing, any flashing that's failing, caulking, that's. That's dry and rotten. That moisture gets in there. We can't stop that, but where before that moisture would get trapped in there. For a long, long time, our system will continue to re-release that moisture out of the wall, so it literally does keep the building dry. And it's, it's permanent.
I, I guarantee you, I've gotten a very good look at the courthouse since we've last visited. And, uh, I've tore a lot of plaster off and, uh, I just don't see it progressing there. I think we've dried it pretty good. Uh, the vaults seem to be in very good condition, uh, very dry. Uh, so there's still some issues. Uh, we, we're addressing them as fast as I can. Uh, in two different corners. I need to do a lot of, uh, different grading and stuff and we're trying to get to that, but.
That's all part of the total solution to keep the building dry. Looks in your gutters like you did and all the downspouts, making sure that the grade is sloped away from the foundation, so. Rainwater is washing away and not running down the foundation wall. Um, a lot of courthouses have been putting drain tile around the foundation, which is super expensive if you're. And really risky if you're excavating around the foundation, these old buildings, so a lot of them are doing it in the basement, but. In any way, look at it, the drain tiles are really expensive, so.
I, you know, and I, I don't come from a maintenance background. I come from a concrete background. So when we're talking about foundations and basements and weak tiles and all that, coming in and cutting them. There, there would be, in my estimation, there'd be no reason to ever put a drain tile into the courthouse.
It doesn't seem like it.
We don't have that kind of water.
That's right. And you're up on a hill, which is great, so you got good drainage.
You move out towards Lancaster and stuff like that where there's a lot of springs and a lot of water, then you better put it in.
Yeah.
Uh, but I just don't see that there and, uh. I, like I say, I've gotten a really good look at some of the rooms down there in the basement lately and. I just, I look for that because I would come back and tell them, hey, you know what? We can do this, but we need to do this first.
Right.
But, uh, it's not, I, I don't think I've ever come in and said, you know, anything other than wiring that. Where, hey, we gotta take a couple of different plumbing lines, you know, we have to take care of, but I'm just not seeing that moisture. That could be, it's been a dry two years too.
And that happens, you know, wet years, you know, heavy rains, it can saturate the foundation again and that takes a while to dry out and so. You know, if anything, it's a good preventative measure to make sure that no moisture comes back into the building, so. We always strongly recommend it in, in any old building. We're, we're gonna be putting it in new buildings. We, in fact, we do put it in new buildings. As a preventative measure so that the moisture never can get into the building. But maybe you're thinking of the Memorial Hall and issues that's going on there.
I, I see more of a water issue down there, a lot of places down there, but, uh, I don't see it at the courthouse as much, but. If you want to do an inspection and tell me what there is, then we could look again and.
Yeah, absolutely. Now, if I remember right, in the Memorial Hall, there was a mechanical room that was down below grade quite a bit. That was where the really serious issues were.
Yeah, which to me isn't, I mean, it is an issue because of the boiler being in there, but. We're putting them up dry, so that makes a weak influence there.
Well, we're in the soldiers' and sailors' war memorial up in South Dakota right across the front steps of the Capitol, so.
I'm just asking because I don't know the answer, but what he's doing free evaluations is senior village one that needs to be looked at.
You know, uh. I, you, you should be, I mean, we, we ought to go up there too, probably.
Okay.
I mean, uh.
Just a thought.
There's no reason not to do the basement down there for sure because that, that is a water trap there.
Yeah, that's what I.
And we know that it's a cost problem. So, yeah, we do add another building to you.
Sure.
Do that.
Okay. Did you want to do it today or you want to schedule it, sort of come back or?
I just have you work with Brian.
We'll, we'll get together after this and schedule a date.
Okay.
Uh, this week is, might be a scosh busy, but, uh, next week we'll be alright.
Okay. Yeah, well, let's, if we can figure out a date next week, cause I'll be up in South Dakota doing, um, Department of Corrections facility. We're gonna be installing the system in. Um, so, but we could pick one day that works for you, either earlier or later in the week.
Okay, yeah. And now that he said department, we might as well do the jail too.
I was just thinking of that, but Jack's on, so.
We're in, we're in quite a few jails.
I'll, I'll get with the sheriff and we'll see if he's interested in setting up something.
Okay. Brian, do you got a card I can remember?
I do, yeah.
You, you want to just, uh, call afterwards? I have a whole longer meetings going forward.
I'm, I'm walking out with you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for the information.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for having me.
Thanks, Brian.
And we can offer a solution to the guys if it's. We really care about these old buildings. We want them to last a long time. Fortunately, they're tearing a lot of them down and when, when the salt gets into the foundation too badly. It becomes a point where the expenditure to rehab it is too expensive and they tear the darn buildings down. We really don't want that to happen, so.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks again.
Bathroom break? I will leave out as well. We're gonna take a progression break and then. Free convening? We'll be quick.
Alan, for that six weeks, Michelle sends over. She needs to get a list of all the grants to you guys. Is that what I'm, is that what I understood?
Yeah, I would just ask the, whoever she has, whoever the department's hands, would they just, uh, let us know? Uh, it, it may not be a perfect list. I mean, there may be some that don't have it all, but yeah, just. That was status.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to kind of make sure I had the correct information data.
Yeah.
Uh, pass on.
To start with that, and I don't think they need to fill out a new form like this, but new things going forward, we'll do a form. Yeah, just, just give the information.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Like I said, I just wanted to clarify.
It might be easier if you give the information to put it all on these forms, so it's consistent. Wherever she thinks works.
I'll check with her.
Yeah, she has a database, spreadsheet, who knows how.
Yeah, that's it. I can check with her.
So Kaylee, our commission meeting was, did we make a change at the end of April? For some reason on Monday, I put the county commission meeting on April twenty-fourth. I think it was a mistake on my part. But was there anything that you know of? I don't know why we've done that.
I still have it as a twenty. Fifth in the digital agenda, but I'm not gonna say that there's not.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's on me. I just, I'm starting to have a bunch of dates.
Okay, I was gonna say, I'm sure one's still the twenty-fifth and I didn't have any that's in here.
Okay.
Also, you have to double check with them unless I miss something that we just don't have as well.
Meeting somewhere, it was delayed somebody, so that's why I was just trying to make sure I had it right. Eric, in your planner, did you have anything on April twenty-fifth as our next meeting? What I'm next, our meeting is a Tuesday, or twenty-fifth? For some reason in my calendar, I put in the twenty-fourth, so I think it was my mistake in my calendar, but I was just trying to verify.
I'm not sure if it's even on our work calendar, but that is necessary.
I have nothing on April twenty-fifth written down.
So that's your regular meeting?
Yeah, I mean, but I mean, there was nothing, no.
Okay, then that's just, I'm just gonna take it off then, okay.
So one check with Casey.
He was asking if there was.
Oh, I think I made a mistake on my calendar. April twenty-fifth is our meeting. I put April twenty-fourth, the Monday. I'm gonna verify there wasn't some other meeting or some reason. Pretty tricky wrapping stuff in, so if I get one wrong, that's a while, that's not common.
So the twenty-fifth, it was probably because you and I were gonna be at the K C C A conference, maybe? So, but you're not. So, but you're not gonna be, so.
That's what it was.
That's probably why.
So we're back on the Tuesday.
Yeah, and on timeline, I might not be here because I'm going to that, but.
So you may not be, but we still have our meeting.
Yep.
Well, we're prepared to go to the 24th, so you can be here.
That's up to you guys. If you're willing to do that.
Do a Monday instead of Tuesday. I already had it blocked, so it didn't make any difference to me. It doesn't make many difference.
Okay, if you guys are willing to do that, that'd be awesome. And then we'll just make sure Michelle's crew and the clerks know we're gonna alter that.
So we are changing it to the?
Monday?
Monday?
The 24th.
So we'll change it on the calendar.
Okay, that's why I had that in there.
Thanks for bringing that up.
I took the KC out of my, uh, out of my calendar.
Well, I was like, I thought that there was, but I was like, I didn't have anything on our calendar, so.
Yeah.
So we are now having it instead of Tuesday, April 25th, you guys are saying Monday, April 24th?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for having that undercount, it's KC off because I told you Chicago.
Yep, nope, you're good.
That's what threw me off, okay. There was a reason.
I wanted to circle back on the forms that we just approved. Um, and find out who and how those will be distributed for our department heads to know uh, that we're, we're doing this. And requiring these, um, just to make sure it gets done too.
Um, would we want to talk with Michelle? And then I would think that if she's going to be the one in charge of it, that maybe they come from her.
Okay.
That way everything is, it's focused. It's not, this is sent to the commission, but then she's taking care of it.
Agreed. Okay, so the clerk will distribute um, those to departments. Okay.
Uh, you know, that might not be a bad question to ask during budget, when they're coming in for the budget. It's like, do you have any, uh, any grants or anything that need to be administered? And that way we will catch them all.
Yeah.
We kind of talk, maybe open the door, talk about any of them, and then they will get and keep a list of them.
But I, I think the takeaway I took from all this was the most valuable part is letting them know that we need to know. Because other grants ask if you have other grants. And we don't do, losing a grant opportunity because we fail to tell them we have other grants for administration. So it's not to macro manage their stuff, just have an information source.
Yeah, and what we need to know is if there's a changeover real fast. And, and here's a grant hanging out there and nothing's being done on it. You know, that could be major implications on, on the, on it. So we need to kind of have a second set of eyes that's at least another contact there that can at least alert the rest of us what's going on.
Um, Pat, uh, did you, I didn't see an email back to the city manager on, sorry.
You're right, and I didn't put that on my list. I remember talking about it, we gave it on my list.
Okay.
And what was it?
Uh, he's gonna respond with us on it, telling her about um, the tax sale properties going to be put in the county's name and then published first.
Okay, yes.
Um, and then there's the abstracting you were gonna bring back.
Yeah, there was a, a change that, uh, O'Keefe Wilson had requested. And I must have emailed it back to me, they have not, so I'll have to refer it next week.
Okay, I'll leave this in here for next week then. And then any updates on tax sale?
Well, no.
Okay.
The abstracting, of course, is the next step.
Okay, and then from that, you'll, we'll be able to set a date for the fall or sometime?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, so that is everything I have to follow up on on that. Um, we have an executive session for non-elected personnel for 15 minutes. Um, county appraiser, HR and commissioners, please.
Appraiser.
I, I don't see Debbie on it.
She's in the other room.
Okay, I was like, I, I was just making sure my.
HR and commission?
Yes.
Before we start all those, I'm gonna do a quick little political update.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the sales tax legislation in Kansas, I think yesterday, that came out of a conference committee. They put the banning all local sales tax on food back in a bill. And it looks like it's gonna get packaged with other things that they wanted before. So there's a chance we'll lose our sales tax on food. So just heads up.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's back in play again.
Thank you for that update.
Yeah, I mean, I just read it last night.
I appreciate you. You're doing good about keeping it one.
Yeah, time master.
I, I don't understand their thinking on this. You know, the, there's a lot of counties that's got all of their, their funding, you know, laid out according to what's passed by the public.
Right.
And so if they change that, and at the same time, they have been telling us they don't want us to raise uh, local property tax. So where do they think this is going? If they, they ain't get off of the food, it's gonna be a mass rush to uh, not meet the R and R.
And, and I, I'm a hundred percent for getting rid of all sales tax on food. I have no, if they want your local, that's fine, but you just don't do it like chomping block. I mean, you said, hey, you have five years to phase it out and you have ways to figure that out. Do something, but just to, just to.
Five years is too much, because if, if these, if these are set on a 10-year sunset.
Well, that's true too.
You know, and these have all been put forth according to the criteria set before.
Yeah.
And it's put, so I can understand once if it came to a sunset. And then once it naturally sunsetted, then it was off. But I, I just don't agree with that.
Very tax they approved that we could put on, but now they're pulling off from under us, so it feels a little uneven.
Yeah, especially when they're on the other side of it, they're saying no more local or doing the R and R legislation where we're having to uh, do extra duty to, to notify the public of any raise there.
Yeah.
So.
Plus some of these cities and municipalities, they have financed things with bonds or, or other mechanisms to knowing that that's sales tax revenue. And now it's gone. Anyway, just a heads up.
Back to this, appraiser, HR and commission?
Yes.
15 minutes?
15 minutes, please.
And non-elected?
Yes.
I'll move that the board of county commissioners recessed to executive session at 11:17 uh, AM to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA 75-4319B1. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session at uh, 11:32 uh, AM on the Zoom platform. Oh. And in the commission room, which is at the EOC uh, 10-443 US Highway 59. And those present will be uh, county appraiser, county HR and the three commissioners.
Okay, all second. It's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. You're, you're fine. I tried to read like.
Can we hear the ones that Michelle next?
Okay. Okay, so we're doing, all right, let me cross these off. Clerk, HR, county counselor, commissioners, 15 minutes, non-elected personnel, please.
Go through the clerk, HR, who else?
Sorry, clerk, HR, county counselor and commissioners for 15 minutes on non-elected.
Hey Kayla, during this on executive session, could you contact Joe Snyder and see if he'd be available for 15 minutes?
Okay, thank you. And that would probably be at noon. If he, if he'd be available in 15 minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll move that the board of county commissioners recessed to executive session at 11:33 AM to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA 75-4319B1. And the purp, and that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session at uh, 48 AM on the Zoom platform. And in the uh, EOC Center 10-443 US Highway 59. And those present will be county clerk, county HR, county counselor and the three commissioners.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. We are heading into executive session.
Yes, I've been there five times.
It's so good.
Yes, okay, so I just update?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Budget work.
Thank you.
No.
Okay.
I'll sit, I'll forward it to you guys.
All right, thank you guys.
Okay.
I'm gonna go back because I have, I have stuff to do, so you don't need to do anything else.
I don't get some, Casey, do you need Michelle for you?
Uh, sorry, no, nope, we're good.
I'll hold off later.
Yep, I'm gonna come um, to your office after this meeting and print something, some things if that's okay.
Okay, perfect.
I've used Wes's enough today, like, all my printing?
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Okay, so um, executive session, please, 15 minutes, non-elected personnel, HR and three commissioners.
HR and who?
Three commissioners.
Were you able to confirm with people over here?
Awesome, thank you. Thank you.
Check your email.
From Kathy?
Yeah.
No, we're still recording, we're waiting on motion.
Yeah, I was just waiting, right, make sure that we're ready to go in when we are.
Okay. Myself.
I'll move that the board of county commissioners recessed to executive session at 11:50 AM to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA 75-4319B1. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board will come out of executive session at 12:05 PM on the Zoom platform. I don't know if, are we doing Zoom? No. Will we uh, come out of executive session at the EOC at 10-443 US Highway 59? And those present will be uh, HR and three commissioners.
All second, it's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Okay, I'll make a motion to extend our meeting uh, to, for 10 minutes. So we'll come out at 12:15.
15, please.
12:15.
No, 15 minutes.
Oh, 15 minutes, okay. Uh, 12:20, yeah, I'll amend that to come out at 12:20.
All second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye. Uh, passes three to zero.
12:20.
What's the next?
So we'll just have um, an attorney client uh, for 15 minutes when Alan gets back uh, with commissioners, county counselor and Roden Bridge Superintendent.
For how long?
Uh, 15 minutes is fine. I always say that and then we end up talking longer. Maybe we should do 20 minutes. Sorry. Like messing.
Thank you.
Okay, so. I think I'm ready to hand you back your paperwork for the day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet.
I move that the board of county commissioners recessed to executive session at 12:22 PM for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship is allowed by KSA, KSA 75-4319B2. And that the purpose of the clo, closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of executive session at 12:42 PM uh, in the EOC at 10-443 US Highway 59. And those present will be uh, the three commissioners, uh, Roden Bridge, uh, Joe Snyder and County Counselor Pat Henderson.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. We head into a 20-minute executive session.
Yeah, we had talked a couple of times.
Okay. Okay, um, all right, any more need for any executive session? Have about 18 minutes left for today. Uh, are we gonna do anything for Kansas County Government Month? Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Joe.
Oh, Joe, one more thing. Uh, on Thursday, could you come to the budget meeting at 1:30 instead of two? From 1:30?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, where's it gonna be?
Here, 1:30 to 2:30?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good move.
Yeah, I, I knew there was something else I was forgetting to tell you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Um, anyway, I just got the email from Kansas Association of Counties that it's county government month in April. And you've done things in the past, but it's kind of four days in.
I haven't made no thoughts and thought about it, so. I'm gonna do send a, forward an email to you two right now. While we were having our meeting, I had an email come from Kathy Crockett. There's a little document called interlocal agreement.
Oh, nice.
There is one?
I just got, I don't know what it is, I just have a look.
Yeah, there's a joint resolution and it is not in our, it's from 1999. It's not in our list of resolutions, but it does look like it's, like it's signed by Mike Kavanaugh, who was, I, I'm assuming he was the chairman, but he was definitely on the board at that time. And I wasn't there, but it's not an interlocal agreement.
No, it is, it's labeled as such, but yeah.
You saying it isn't or is?
It's not.
It's a joint resolution.
Wouldn't you have to have both signatures, both sides?
It is, but there's also, uh, they have to, interlocal agreements have to be approved by, by the AG's office.
And that was still true in 97, right?
You know, I don't know. I, I.
I've seen that one's referenced.
I think so.
Yeah.
But I, I didn't check it, but. And also I don't know the extent, whether it's been followed or not.
This is about an executive committee. First time I've seen it, so. Some assumptions in this email, I think. If Mark has sent the unemail, it's assumed there might have been agreement, so I think. The more I look at this stuff, I think I need to be at that meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, yeah.
Do Jack kinda like that? Do Jack lighten it up?
Okay, well, can you, can't get the Zoom for that?
Um, they're working on it. The challenge on the Zoom, she said, was the location. Um, they're in the basement of the Justice Center. It says bad Wi-Fi and zero cell service. But they're actually going to try to, um, get a hotspot down there or something where they can get a connection. So we're gonna, they're gonna try to do Zoom. So I'm just kinda waiting.
Okay.
It's probably not the first time they've had that question, so. It's just, it's, we're gonna, just trying to find a solution.
Do they mean the basement of the old courthouse?
Says Law Enforcement Center, basement of Law Enforcement Center.
Well, they gotta have. Like, that's where they're.
Yeah, she said the Wi-Fi.
Front communication center. I know they have internet down there. They may not have Wi-Fi, but.
That's a good point. I'll send that to you, Pat. Where she sent me. The training room is directly across from dispatch where our comms are located, so she's surprised too, so I don't know. Find out. You better have Zoom. Anything else we know from Thursday?
Well, that's what I was just looking at. Um, we've only received budgets from Human Resources and then ITGIS Emergency Management, so, um, do we want to have the clerk email the departments that are scheduled for Thursday to ensure we get them a day ahead of time? So we have time to review? I plan to put together for my own personal, like, a list of questions so I can be consistent in every every meeting, kind of to ask the same, you know, things, um. We have maintenance and then HR's next, which we have theirs, and ITGIS Emergency Management Rescue next, which we have theirs. So I can say something to Cory on the way out, uh, Senior Village.
I bet, I bet Cory's ready now.
Yeah, probably. And, and Rhode and Bridge, so, um. I'll just send reminders to, we can have them hopefully maybe tomorrow if that works for you guys, so we have a little bit of time to
Yeah.
look through them.
Absolutely. Wait through them and get the initial shock.
Yeah.
Out of your system.
A lot of it'll be during the hour of just discussing each, you know, learn, understanding what it is and.
I've got questions in my mind. I'll bring them all out. Do you wanna talk about what you're, kind of what questions you're gonna ask? Then I can sort of, I've made some notes throughout this file.
Yeah, what, what questions are you?
I asked you first.
I mean. I haven't written them down. I, my brain is like, just continues to.
Well, we'll just start it on April, on, on Thursday.
Okay.
One, one question I've really got is, I've gotten some feedback already from some people that as far as the percentage of COLA, that's gonna be challenging. And I thought we've got some people that are underwater on budget on salaries. So to me, let's just say if it's three percent, if three percent they're, if they're, they're spread sour range, three percent's fine, maybe, or whatever the number is, but if we, if they're under that, they may get more than three percent because trying to get them up. So it's gonna be different, I think, trying to get some people back to the right levels. But I wanna make sure department heads are on, on board with where we need to get people to. You know, so I, and, and this is the wage survey scale and all that stuff, so. But I'd like to do some groundwork for that to find out where we're at and trying to get around forty hours is the other thing. So.
So you're saying you had feedback that we need to adjust their wages?
Three, I don't know. Three, three percent's not gonna probably be well-received. I mean, it's, it's, it's been a pretty tough year for people. With inflation and cops living. I don't think you expect eight or nine, you know, but. I think it's probably more reasonable to be around five, I guess. But until we go through these conversations, it's hard to say. Number, I've heard one place in town that did fifteen percent. I bet Joe put it.
Public sector?
Uh, yeah. Haven't verified it, but yeah.
Actually, one thing I noticed is we need to request Wes to send us the spreadsheet like Jody did. Cause that spreadsheet's very helpful in looking at it.
Yeah, I have to get ready to be consistent on the format.
Yeah, and it needs to be like HR provided to us, like with the. So how do you wanna get everyone to be consistent prior to them showing up? Because we need to have the information. Do you want Michelle to send something out? Do you want me to send?
Oh, I think it's, it's too late now. Yeah, it's just, I think that's a goal long-term.
Well, I, I mean, I want to have the spreadsheet for our budget discussion. That's helpful.
Yeah, I think it's not that bad.
All right, I'll just email him and ask for it. That way we have it, have it sent to Commissioners at.
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah, so we'll go through this set of workshops and then have a, a second set of workshops down the road. Maybe not with their department, just depends on what we're meeting.
Yeah, there'll be some that we meet several times, I'm sure.
Pat, as long as it's just a simple request for our budget workshop, is it okay to put the Commissioners on it so they see? Okay. Cause I'm not, I don't need feedback. It's just a simple, for scheduling, I need to see spreadsheet and, and budget. Okay.
As long as you're not expressing personal views.
Yeah, not at all. I just, I like the communication so you guys know what's being.
Yeah.
That way there's no, nothing misconstrued, I guess. Do you have that schedule pulled up by chance? Brian?
Yeah.
Brian, Joe and
Yeah, I'll take it.
And Cory and David.
Did you, did you say you, you wanted one or you wanted to print one?
Well, I was just gonna ask those four department heads that we haven't gotten anything for, to send us.
Okay, yeah.
Please send Commissioners your budget worksheets and Excel spreadsheet of personnel.
You know, back to your observations on the sales tax there that they may try to take that away. I would almost think that would be like we're in a contract, you know, we did a ten-year or, and it's a dedicated tax. And, and it was approved, I mean, it went through the channels. And now they're doing the switcheroo on that. It seems like it's gonna almost be a breach of contract law somehow.
I can't disagree. Yeah, no, no, they're up against it for today. See what happens. Those are the half, end of the session. It was into bundling things, you know, and you you have to vote yes for three of the things out of the four, and you have to just put up with that force, and this is kinda what they're doing.
But didn't they have to vote, to put that out back into the?
House Conference Committee, House has said it, Conference Committee.
Oh, Conference Committee.
Yeah, which are re-selected by folks who wanna get it done their way.
Is there any way of knowing figuring out what percentage of, like, that sales tax is collected on food? I mean, I, I've never seen a breakdown of.
There may be, somebody could do an estimate, maybe, I don't. It's broken by retailer that you, I can't see that, but, you know, like how much.
Trevor, yeah, maybe give us some estimate about it.
Probably do that, yeah. All right, I bet Kansas Department of Revenue would give you an estimate on what it would be for the food part. That may be out there somewhere.
Well. So I think it's gonna be a shock when I.
I mean, obviously, the sales tax collecting lots of other things besides food, but, um.
Oh, I know, but yeah.
Yeah.
It could be a major portion.
Food's gonna be a big chunk. I can't say I couldn't be. Of course, you know, you sell a new car. I mean, that's still gonna be on that. I mean, so so you're still gonna have some pretty, pretty good tax collections. It's just that questions drop off in food.
All right, do we have any other public comment? Isn't it here so? Or in the seconds here, I almost hit to hit one, and I'll ask for a motion for adjournment. And then see you guys for the work, budget workshop on Thursday then.
Nine.
Yep, starting at nine with maintenance and.
Now, you bring a lunch in?
Well, we are through of lunch. I mean, I can bring you some Uncrustables. You want some Uncrustables?
We have a lunch period in there, don't we?
There's a half-hour break, of course. Was there? Was it?
I don't think you did much break in.
I think we did. They said that we did.
No, it was, I saw it somewhere, was that it?
All right.
Nine to twelve and one to three is what I have now.
One o'clock. Do we have nine to twelve and one to, well, EMS has scheduled it.
Twelve, right. Yeah.
So we, there is no break? Thursday?
No, but you're, I could need the whole hour for Cory, so.
We'll figure it out.
But I mean.
Yeah.
Thought that was approved time slot. I mean, it's changed.
We did a half-hour break on the other one, I think.
That we talked about last week.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move to adjourn.
Okay. Moved in second. If all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. We are good.